Okay, good evening. Seven o'clock, Tuesday, June 26th. I'd like to welcome one and all. City Council meeting is now called to order. I'm going to ask you first, please, stand for invocation. Pledge of allegiance. Let us bow our heads. Oh heavenly Father, please bless the citizens of this island. Please keep our citizens, their families and friends and visitors, safe through this summer season. Help us prepare for the storm season ahead. We also thank you for the men and women who served this city with so little recognition, but who are always there when the need calls. Please continue to watch over them. Grant us wisdom as we conduct our city's business tonight. For it is in your name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Marie, can you please call a roll?
Councilmember Burgwar.
Here.
Councilmember Patelley.
Here.
Councilmember Cass.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Present.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Cronin.
Present.
Administrator Tucker.
Here.
And Attorney Halverson.
Here.
Thank you very much. Thanks all for coming. Next item on our agenda, reading of the Journal of the previous meetings, regular meeting of May 22nd, special meeting of June 12th. Minutes are in your package. Do you have a motion to approve or amend?
So moved.
Seconded. Move to approve. Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None heard.
Okay. We're now up to citizens' comments. We have a couple of citizens that will be addressing us this evening. Before we do that, I just want to thank everybody who attended our disaster expo. It was very well received. The staff worked hard. They were fully attended. All the people that came were very interested in what was being presented to them. We had a greater attendance than we probably had in, I don't know, five, seven years. It was very well done and I'm hoping we can do and build on it for next year. Maybe we can keep the thunderstorms away a little better, but it was very well done. And if you haven't had the opportunity to get caught up to date, please stop by City Hall. We have packages upstairs that can help you prepare in the event of a storm, notwithstanding what we have this coming weekend coming upon us.
The website as well.
And the website is well documented as well. Please stop by if you need any information or visit the website. The only other thing, well, a couple of things I want to inform everybody of is, first of all, we have fireworks, July 4th. Where else? The only other caution I have to inform everybody of is that it's at sunset. Coincident with sunset is a high tide, and the high tide is going to be over six and a half feet. So get there early, get your beach, get a dry beach, and enjoy. It'll be crowded and be tightly packed. And we'll try and keep the rain away as well. And then later this week, city administrator and myself will be visiting, I guess Marty will be with us, will be down with the municipal association annual meeting. We'll be receiving an award for the municipal achievement award, one of a few that they give out. And this is, I guess, our third achievement award in three or four years. We'll bring it back and display it for everybody's use, or graces, or whatever you want to say. So, citizens' comments. First, I'd like to have Bobby step forward. He has a request before the city for city-sponsored volleyball.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I am here for my monthly volleyball. Basically, I've got two things on the agenda I'm trying to ask council about. One is a girls' league that will start after, no, excuse me, July 4th week. It'd be a league that would run for six weeks, and it would be teenage girls from the ages of 12 to, it says 18, I think it's like 16, 17. And it would be on Wednesday afternoons. One thing I do want to stipulate is that I'm not trying to, even though I've got to run it like a business, it's not really a business. I don't want any money out of it. I told the Public Safety Committee that if I show a profit at the end of the period, I will donate the money to charity. I don't want to make money off of this. I don't want to be seen as making money off of this. I don't want any money off of it. And it's just something that, I'm just, I've got a daughter who plays volleyball, and I guess I'm just trying to be a dad. With respect. The other thing is just a volleyball tournament that we, is basically just some, the local players just kind of get together, and what they do is, they do have an entry fee, and what the entry fee does is it pretty much pays for the tournament and the prize money. And so there's really nobody, no business or anything getting any money off of this at all, which just kind of goes, the money accumulated the day of the tournament is just, goes back into the tournament itself. And that takes place in, oh gosh, what day is it? It's August?
Eighteenth.
I can't read the numbers.
Eighteenth. Marty's reading.
Eighteen, nineteen, something like that, yes.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions? I'm assuming you're meeting the city's...
I will take it, the last one, the insurance was correct. It would be the same type of insurance agency would be doing that. And I've acquired that. Of course, I'm waiting to get approval to finish that, wrap that up.
Okay, and this was approved by the Public Safety Committee. Yes, it was. Last meeting.
Jimmy has a question.
Jimmy?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Bobby. Like before, the tournament, all the local businesses down there with the beach front which are all in mind and happy about this?
You know, as far as I know, Jimmy, I haven't really had any complaints. Couple of years ago, we had one business complain, we don't put a nap in front of their, on the beach, in their area. You know, there's, if anybody complains, or, you know, I won't put one there, we won't put one there. You know, now, if something comes up, I can't say that somebody won't complain. If they do, then we, you know, we just won't, you know, put it in their area, or, you know, even the houses, you know, down the beach or whatever.
Well, besides being a good father, I think you're all good business for doing it, too.
Yeah, and thank you. And my son wants a skateboard park. That's the last thing he said to me on the door.
Put your commercial in, right? We'll give you the number of county parking records.
Yeah, I've taken him over to North Charleston, that's the corner of Dorchester and Ashley Phosphate, that's a ride.
Yeah.
That's a ride, yes.
Bobby, have you checked the tide charts? Are we in good shape, a lot of, and for the tournament?
You know, I have it. We have like three quarters behind the one jamming the beach. They're kind of up in the, up in the dunes a little bit further. And I haven't checked the tide chart. On Wednesdays, you know, there are times where there might be a problem. If it's a problem, then, you know, of course, we won't be able to do it. Or the weather, you know, the tide and the weather, or, you know, we're at mercy of those.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve this as a city-sponsored, the two events as a city-sponsored event?
So moved. We're still in public comments.
We're in public comments, aren't we?
Yeah.
Okay.
Permission to move it up the agenda?
It's where it is.
It's on the agenda as, in citizens' comments.
In this agenda.
This is the only place it's on.
Okay. Charlie says there's no issue with taking the motion, then.
Okay. Okay, so I have a motion in a second. All right, any discussion? All right, none heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Serve away.
All righty. Thank you very much. You all have a good one.
Thanks, Bobby. I would like to entertain a motion to move item 8A up onto the agenda and take it up for consideration at this time. We have Leonard Way with us, and we'll ask him to address this as we take it up. So, can I have a motion? So moved.
8A?
8A. Okay. Do I have a motion? Marty, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. So, up for consideration?
Did we ask anyone else for citizen comments?
Oh, excuse me. You're right. You're right. I shouldn't come off of that. Any other citizen wish to address? All right, moving on. Thank you. That was a good catch. Thanks. We now take up item 8A. This is second reading of ordinance 2012-2, an ordinance authorizing the release of a quick claim deed, City of Isle of Palms interest in the property identified as Casino Avenue and 18th Avenue to Pastime Amusement Company, Inc. I'll make that as a motion and suspend the reading of the ordinance.
Second.
Motion is seconded. I'm going to ask Leonard to come forward. Leonard Way is with us tonight. He represents Pastime Amusements and a lot of other companies, but more importantly, the beach company that really runs this facility. So just talk to us about what you're driving at here.
Sure. Thank you. Again, my name's Leonard Way, and I am vice president with Pastime Amusement Company, which owns the Island Center. I'm also the vice president of the beach company, which oversees our other properties here on the Isle of Palms. The service road for the shopping center is pretty much just that. It's a service road, and for many decades, a stone road has been sufficient. But it's not ideal in any being shape or form. As you probably are aware, we are proposing to do a pretty significant renovation with the shopping center, hopefully starting off in late 2012, early 2013. And as part of that renovation, we want to bring the entire center back up to the standard for which we think it should be. It's come into a bit disrepair and a little bit of other things as we've waited for time to pass by. We addressed this question about the road many administrations ago. There is a question about ownership, and Pastime Amusement has just offered that in exchange for clarifying the ownership, that it can be pastimes. Pastime will take the expense in handling the burden of paving that service way. So there's no more Dustin Palm Boulevard, and it'll be a little cleaner and better presented for everyone there. It is our intent to keep that service road in its current location. The redevelopment basically is going to stay within the footprint of the existing buildings. By having ownership, it does help us with a couple of items, so that we do not need to request variances from the city. And then as added benefit to the city, that property will come back onto the tax rolls, and I'm sure the community is going to go ahead and steer us. That's our request.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's open up for questions. Anybody have any questions for Leonard, first of all, while he's here? Jimmy?
Yes, sir. Leonard, thanks for coming tonight. Since our first reading, I've had several people call me up about the road itself and why are we giving away a road to a developer? And, you know, my concern or questions are, you know, the big picture. What is going to happen back there? And you'd answered one of my questions, asked for the road to stay in or not, and I appreciate you saying that. But I guess we'd all like to kind of know what the future is going to be there. It's the center of Isle of Palms. I know you all want it to look good, but at the same time, we do have an obligation to the people who live here to make sure that we have some protections remaining a good-looking center. So I guess that's the only areas, what is going to take place there? You know, how is that really going to come into play with setbacks and?
Basically, we're going to, as best as I understand it, be able to utilize the right-of-way distance for our setbacks for the existing buildings. There's maybe a 10-foot section of building that would have impeded into that setback area. Basically, from what Joe Citizen will see as a paved service road, it's, I don't think anyone has ever truly used it as a public roadway. It's always been there for our tenants, to the delivery trucks, parking in the rear for the employees of the tenants that are there. That is the intent. The intent is to take everything that is currently rocked and pave it, and have real parking in the back for those employees. Create a one-directional aspect. I've been back there many times when you have delivery trucks coming from every direction. We're going to make it one-way. We'll line it up, to the left of the old dry cleaner, we'll stay there. We're going to close off some of those entrance ways, and then line it up to exit with the furthest, I guess, the...
West.
South. Or west, the exitway from the center.
I did drive by there this week, and that's a bumpy road. It's an adventure.
Leonard, I've got a question. It doesn't really have to do with that road per se, but you mentioned the different entrances and exits. I've noticed personally, when I, if I'm going red or white, red and white or something in my Honda, or even in my little Ranger pickup truck, it's hard to see out on the Palm Boulevard with the bushes and all, even though it's wonderfully landscaped. They're a little high, and I would hope that you all would take that safety factor into consideration with whatever you do on the overall...
I assure you, Douglas Currie is already addressing landscaping.
Very good.
It needs to stay in place, but your point is well taken. It probably does need to be reduced in some areas.
Thank you. Michael?
If the city conveys the road to the beach company, what happens with those four lots that are residential on the right side of that property?
Nothing at this time.
So it's the intention of the beach company to leave them as residential?
No, sir. We're going to be coming back at another point in time with a request, but we do not have any plans for them at this time.
Thank you.
Okay. Laura?
Just to be clear, so you're going to change the flow of traffic, that it would be into the lot down by the Pelican Cleaners and out of the lot way down by the connector?
Yes, sir.
Is that the... That seems very unsafe to me, if you're going to be putting 18-wheelers making a turn on the Palm right at the light.
They'll be exiting to the right and immediately onto the Isle of Palms connector.
With traffic.
With traffic.
Which are controlled by the traffic signal.
Right. Now, it just seems counterintuitive to me that you'd want to give them big enough amount up to the light.
Well, I mean, I'm not a traffic engineer, but the option is then would, the alternative would be to turn immediately coming off the connector, turn it quick, which is even more dangerous, because people are right on your tail.
Well, it doesn't have to be one-way.
Well, but there's not enough room for two-way.
And Councilman Carroll asked you about what, could you enlighten everybody what you're going to do to that footprint, so we can be part of the...
What is under consideration right now, but we have not been able to finalize as yet, is from Long Island Cafe to the right, going through to Beachside Realty, that structure will stay in place. It will get a facade change. From the red and white to the left, including the old Wild Dunes Resort Out parcel, those buildings could come down, be replaced with one large anchor tenant. When I say large, it's about 20, 25,000 feet. That approximates the same amount of square foot that's currently there. And then building a approximately 5,000 square foot building between where the Wild Dunes building is and the liquor store. And the local tenants would hopefully be moved over if they so wish, and we would come in with a new anchor.
Okay. Jimmy?
The big question is, and I'm here, is even more specific, what's going to happen to the red and white?
Their lease is ending, and it's not being renewed.
And you're having a new anchor tenant? Can you disclose, will that be a grocery store?
I cannot disclose, sorry.
I understand it's separate from the issue we're talking about tonight, but it's just everybody really wants to know.
It will be retail.
Can you tell me?
We came and met with Mayor Cronin two years ago, a year and a half, two years ago, and that was out of it. And you wanted retail, and so...
Do you know, do you have any plans when you might disclose that information?
Hopefully within the next month or so.
We're first on his list to call when he has consummated his arrangements.
Everyone thought he was very interesting.
I know, I know. And, you know, it is a pivotal part of the island, it's right in the center of the island, and everybody knows where it is.
Chairman, I have one, I want to interrupt that one more question.
Go ahead.
I'm quite busy today. I was trying to review the email about Councilman Buchanan's request about what it costs to the city. Can we have a very brief synopsis of, you know, for the alternative plan for us to keep the property and pave that road?
I'd be glad to do that.
Go ahead. You got Douglas's comment?
I have it in my head.
Okay.
What Councilman Ward is referring to is Councilman Buchanan made an inquiry as to what it would cost if the city proceeded to retain ownership of the road and then upgrade the road as has been requested by Pastime Amusements. The discussion that we had was that if the city was going to retain ownership, that they would like to see it upgraded to the standards that they have in their other new shopping centers. So I did request from Charleston County what we might would expect in expense in order to do that. And from the email response that we received from them, it gave some estimates per linear foot for paving and et cetera. Basically, when you calculate those out, the paving alone would run us, you know, a couple of hundred thousand dollars plus. And then we were cautioned that also we might would encounter some need to do some drainage infrastructure along with the paving because of the NPDES requirements, and that would add to the, excuse me, that would add to the expense. The upside of the communication that we received is if the city retained the road and upgraded it, it would then go into the pavement management system. So there would be some potential that eventually maintenance of the road would be done on the same routine as we get the other maintenance. But of course, you all know that sometimes that's never as fast as we would like it. And I don't know how that would factor into the schedule. I think the road, having the 18-wheeler traffic on it, that it will, it will probably require a little more maintenance than most of our roads that don't get consistent, heavy traffic on them. So, you know, there would be an initial expense out there of several hundred thousand dollars. I would venture to say probably $250-plus. And then after that, it would just be ongoing maintenance of both the drainage system and also the paved surface.
Thank you.
Is that sufficient?
Yes, sir.
Questions?
One last clarification on the road going around there. And this, I'm pretty new to this, so having a guarantee that that road will always be there to service y'all shopping centers, probably important to me to make sure we take the track, the trucks off the parking lot side, and it works to your benefit, too. But is there any way we can have assurances that road stays there, whether it's, you know, y'all pave it or however y'all improve it, to make sure it stays there, not moved around or, you know, it kind of creates a buffer for the people who live around there? When I rode back there this week, you can really see any houses behind you, and that's kind of important.
Yes, sir. For the new buildings to be built, our intent is for them to last into the future as long as the current ones have. So we're talking 40 to 50 years, so there'd be no need to move that service road. We would ask for flexibility on the portion coming from Palm Boulevard to the back of the lot, where the existing buildings are staying, so that if there was ever an adjustment with those buildings as they age, we would have the flexibility to move the footprint. But you're always going to have to have a service road for retail, and the larger retailers always want to be loaded from the back.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Ryan, go ahead.
One of the things that concerns me the most is the large lot that, just over an acre lot that we have there, that you have there. Obviously, you have some, it's zoned residential, and obviously, you've kind of let into the fact that you may, you'd be coming back and asking for something to be done with in the future. My question is, if we were to go through and give up our rights to this road, and then, I can just see those lot lines being abandoned, perhaps, or making that entire block commercial. And, you know, that's a residential, I'm really not, and that's down the road, but if we were to give up this road here, and this may be for Sterling, it kind of eliminates access to that lot, or to the, to a lot of those, I mean, not by the road itself up front on Palm Boulevard, but the rest of that, that flat.
Well, the zoning wouldn't be able to be changed unless it was, went through a zoning change request to Bozah, and, you know, it gets all the approvals as far as that goes. So, you know, it's not, that's definitely, that piece of property is currently zoned residential, so something would have to happen in order for that.
But the thing is, what I, the way I see it is now, is if that's 18th Avenue now becomes Pastime Amusement Avenue, and there is no public access to, even while they own those lots over there to the right, there is no public access. Could those be deemed as, you know, not being able to get to them now, and because there's no, they wouldn't be able to break them off, sell them, or sell the whole?
We have other private roads on the island...
Right, correct.
...that have lots only accessible by virtue of the private road for which that property owner has rights.
Correct.
But these property owners wouldn't be having rights to this road. This would be the beach company's road.
You probably wouldn't buy it in that case.
Nobody would buy it, they could have access to the property.
You'd have the right of ingress.
Well, I guess the only thing I'm seeing, I'm looking at, is the fact that if, you know, we go through, right now, it's zoned residential. If we go through and give up rights to this road, and I just see that whole lot becoming commercial, especially with the possibility of expanding the footprint in the future of that, of the building that's going to stay. I don't know, there's too many unanswered questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, okay.
I'd really like to see the plan in the future.
Well, I don't think they have a plan other than what they're doing to the existing structures there.
I agree with Ryan. I have great concern about this. We are, you know, taking care of the city's interests, the city's properties, and now with a very short period of time and not really any announcement to the community, we're giving up a road. And I think, I'd like to postpone all this, have a public hearing, let's get some publicity out there. I don't want to be known as the person who gave away, you know, Isle of Palms land with nothing in return. And I am really concerned about the footprint, the size, and the fact that they are not forthcoming with what they planned. I mean, I truly believe they know what they want to do. That's my opinion. My humble opinion.
Well, they don't have any control over that, because it's a matter of Bozah approving any change in the zoning.
Well, that would be my next question, so...
So the city has the control over whether that gets rezoned or not. It's not a matter of...
So, once we were to give up the land, they would not be coming to us for rezoning, they would be coming to Bozah.
I believe.
Is that the case?
I think the request would go to Bozah.
Correct.
And I don't know if the council gets final approval on that or not.
Or to be rezoned.
To be rezoned.
The council has to approve.
And the magic, you just said the magic words, planning commission. The planning commission hasn't seen anything to do with this road, have they?
That's not, you're talking about the lots.
I'm talking about the whole package.
You're confusing with the road. They hadn't brought forward anything on the lots. You're just concerned about the lots. The only thing that's been brought forward is the road.
As long as, I mean, it's definitely not going to be an automatic reversion to being commercial property or anything like that. It would definitely be something that would have to go through the approval process.
Including council.
I don't know if that's whether it comes up to council, but I think it might.
It has to.
Final approval by council. And it would be a public hearing in that process. But, you know, that would, that would take a request, an application or a request, it would go through the whole, you know, the whole process to do that.
Would this be appropriate?
Well, one thing that we need to make clear, and I'm not an attorney, but I'm not even sure we own the road. Is it clear that we own the road?
We have had occasion in the past where there was question about whether or not we had road ownership or not, and it was actually litigated. And, you know, the same could happen here. If Pastime Amusements or any other entity felt like they had a strong case and wanted to try to claim the road through the court... wanted to try to claim the road through the court system, then we would have to prove that it's a road, and they would have to prove that it's private, and then it would be up to the courts to determine which one of us was right. I think the documentation that we've got is, is reasonable. It was reasonable enough to support, you know, our making a request to Transportation Sales Task Committee, excuse me, a while back, because we wanted the road resurfaced then and made a request. It was our third priority for resurfacing because it does make a mess on Palm Boulevard. So I feel fairly comfortable in saying that we would have a good case for winning litigation associated with who owned the road. But there's no guarantee of that. That would, you know, I don't know what Pastime Amusements might have that I'm not aware of that would make their case. So, but I will tell you, Leonard, if you don't mind, Mayor, I think that probably, I'm just going to throw something out there, because what I keep hearing is that the underlying fear is that this residential lot is going to turn commercial, and therefore, the peace and quiet and enjoyment that the adjacent residential properties that are on 20th Avenue have now might be threatened in some way. And so, I don't know how this is going to play out, but I guess I would say to you, if this were in my court and I was tired of paying taxes on property that I'm not doing anything with, I might consider maybe donating a portion of that property to maintain a buffer in return, to the city. It gets it off y'all's tax rolls, in return for, you know, getting the road in your possession. And that way, maybe, I'm just tossing it out there because I hear everybody's concerns and fears about this, that way, maybe it would mitigate some of those concerns and also accomplish whatever future goals, whatever they are, for having a bigger palette for doing the commercial development while at the same time preserving the quiet enjoyment of those residences. We all know that that particular lot has some huge trees on it that do inhibit some development in that area, even residential. I mean, the residential can happen, but it would have to happen very carefully around those trees.
Would this be an appropriate time to make a motion to-
Well, let me ask a question. Is that something you would consider?
We're, we're open to a lot of things. Let me, let me start by saying, one, our request for paving the road, or to clarify ownership of the road, is before we go spend, as you said, it is several hundred thousand dollars because it does involve drainage. And the site that is to be rebuilt has to be brought up four feet. All the drainage has to be reworked. Our request there is to make this a Class A shopping center once again. That is what we pride ourselves in building and maintaining. The roadway has nothing to do with the residential zoned property. It's two different ownership entities. I know a lot of people group everything under the beach company umbrella, but I will tell you, when it comes to Pastime Amusement, it is a different structure. It is, it doesn't, it reports to different individuals, and the ownership is drastically different than the beach company. So that said, our request to, to gain ownership of the road for paving and improving it has nothing to do with that lot. Your attorney is correct. It's our understanding we have to come back and ask for a rezoning of that property at some point in time. To make part of that lot a buffer, to appease the four residences that back up to it, we're open to those items. For your information, the city of Isle of Palms had that property appraised in either '04 or early '05 as an alternative for your fire station. It appraised it a million four. So it's, it's not an insignificant value, and it's been sitting there totally unused for decades. Your zoning administrator made it very clear, we can't even use that parcel for overflow parking or to meet our parking requirements. So our redevelopment of the island center has been reduced from the original idea so that we are within compliance in parking, to also meet the compliance for landscaping, to meet the compliance for setbacks. So we have kept it totally separate from what we were planning to do in the near future. We do not have plans for that parcel other than at some point, it is not economically feasible to keep carrying a property that's, you know, worth in the seven figures indefinitely. If it's residential, then it may be residential. We probably will not develop it as residential, but someone else may.
Question?
Michael.
So if I'm hearing you right, your concern is you want to upgrade that property. You want to bring it up to your standards of, you know, just a well, good-looking piece of development, correct?
The shopping center, yes.
Okay. Well, if the city commits to work with the county to pave the road and retain ownership, I mean, wouldn't that satisfy your need? Why would you need to take over the road? If we, you know, you know, the road should be covered. We've already requested Charleston County to resurface the road a couple times. I think, you know, if, you know, we could put, exert more pressure on Charleston County-
I would, I wouldn't count on our getting any money out of Charleston County for that. I mean, it's way, I mean, it's hard. They do, they do it-
We give Charleston County an awful lot of money.
I understand, but they have a-
We give a lot more than they give us.
They have, they have a whole assessment on road needs in the county, and they look at use of the roads, et cetera. And it's hard for us to justify using money for that road because nobody uses it, as opposed to other areas of the county where they're needing roads to be paved, et cetera, where there, where there are people that use it. I mean, it's-
In our view, from our legal counsel in the past, is they cannot find where that road was ever officially dedicated to the city, handed over to the city in any way, shape, or form. And we are aware of the various lawsuits that have occurred of where we weren't party, arguing the ownership of roads on the island. Our entities have maintained it for the last 50-some years. And my main fear is, if it is maintains in the city's ownership, am I going to be able to have trucks just parked back there loading my towns? If it's a public roadway, then can they just, you know, be idle for 30 minutes or an hour at a time blocking the roadway? If it's a service drive for a shopping center, which really it is, that's not an issue.
Okay. Any other questions, or are we exhausted?
One last question. Is there, could we delay this a little while to get a better idea of the plans that are coming down, so we know what we are, what the road is going for? Does our residents know what's going to be developed in the shopping center? I mean, again, we're all for the shopping center looking great, and I think the road is something that doesn't service anybody on Isle of Palms except for the shopping center. But it'd be nice for us to be able to tell our constituents, our residents, our neighbors, what's going on as opposed to just quickly moving a road without, somebody asked me, I said, "I can't, I don't know."
Is there any harm in a month or two?
The only issue we're having is setbacks. So if the road is not in the ownership of Pastime Amusement, I've then got to request setback variances for the structure to be built. And we can't go forward with financing and other permitting requests until we have all of the, you know, requirements of the city met. To date, our plan that we presented and worked through with Douglas Kerr meets everything that the city of Isle of Palms has, has on the books and is requested. We are not needing any variances, so long as the road is transferred into our ownership.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Please.
We're tying together 18th Avenue and Casino. And 18th is an issue for, that it should remain a road and the residential, and, but the Casino definitely is a service. I mean, could those two parcels be split? Does it have to be all or nothing?
Because right now, 18th Avenue won't affect the existing structure. I mean, we do need to get trucks up and down there, but if you're talking about having trucks parked around the backside-
What they're doing now.
Right. And employee parking on the back, I don't have a problem.
So, okay.
Signing off on the question.
The thought I hear is, is a, if we divide a baby here-
Correct.
-we may have-
Correct.
We may, everybody may be happy at the end of the day.
Could I make, could I make a motion to table this for this?
Not the only table.
Not table, not table.
Well, you've got a motion-
Postpone it?
We have a motion, and second, we need to amend that motion if we want to consider separating Casino from 18.
Till next month.
Well, I don't want to vote on this as a final thing tonight. I'd like to see-
Even Casino?
The whole thing. I think our citizens need to know what's happening. They don't need to, to read that the city fathers gave away land to a commercial development.
Okay, so-
Seems simple.
The motion is to reconsider this next month.
Correct.
Well, you're amending-
Amending, okay.
Amend the motion.
You have a motion in the second for second reading, so-
Okay.
If you ever made that motion-
Withdraw the motion for second reading and consider it on the agenda for next month.
You made the motion.
Who made the motion?
I did.
I seconded.
And so you, you so, with the motion, motion and second. So-
Now you go for a new motion.
All in favor of amending the motion?
Well, comments on the motion, on the amended motion, correct?
Please.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Did you have a second?
I'm not going to be here.
I made a motion, did I have a second?
Could you please tell me what the, what the motion is that's on the floor? The motion is to amend, is to withdraw the motion.
Yeah, we made it. We had a, they had a motion in the second here for second reading, and now have withdrawn their motion. So now you have a clean slate for a new motion.
Well, now he wants to discuss the withdrawal of the motion.
Well, I'd like to comment on it. You're correct. I have the- Okay, thank you, Mayor. Couple comments. Number one, with this first surface, which was a really short period of time, Mayor, you said that we would have the plans before we were devoting on anything. We don't have a plan, okay? And I remember Keith Summery, the mayor of North Charleston, said that we don't vote on anything until we have the final plans on that. So I think that's a pretty good philosophy to work forward, is let's see what the plan is and then see what we're going to do with it. And so I think we really need to have the plan before we move forward to vote on anything, whether it's a month, or two months, or six months before something moves forward. Number two, I think the planning commission needs to be involved in this. I think they need to review these things, and we, you know, we have a planning commission, we count on those for their guidance to the city, and I think their input is important. We have several members on council who are ex-members of the planning commission, and I think their insights in just taking, taking a break and taking a look at that is going to be a good thing. I also think we really need, the city needs to reach out to all the residents that are going to be affected by this. We're talking about changing setbacks now. We're changing about, basically, if this is conveyed to the, if we make this change, change this to, let's say, good time-
Pastime.
Development or whatever.
Pastime.
A pastime, all right. If we change this, it's going to affect those lots because those lots will be, there'll be no justice, no way to get to those lots to make them residential. They will become commercial.
No, that's-
I mean, there's no way to get to them. You can't access them.
We have lots of private roads on the island that are residential.
But the residential lots aren't going to control them. It's a logical thing those lots are going to come to, and if you think they're not going to move commercial, I think you're mistaken with that, okay? You know, I just think this entire thing needs a lot of more study than we're doing right now, and, you know, so I just want to get that point out there, that, and lastly, if we do make this change and convey this property over, you know, the city should have some kind of compensation for it rather than just not having dust on Palm Boulevard. I think there's a value to that property, and I think the city should be compensated for that, for that property. I'm done, thank you.
Okay.
That's assuming we own it.
Well, that's the biggest question in the House. Okay, can I entertain a motion? We have no motion on the floor.
Okay, can I move that we postpone second reading of this ordinance until next month and direct the city administrator to reach out to the community, let the community know, whether it's an ad in the paper or whatever, somehow let the community know what's going on, because I don't think anyone has a clue, and discuss the possibility of Casino versus 18th.
Okay. Motion, do I have a second to that?
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next month.
We'll probably will schedule a public hearing sometime.
Thank you.
All right, let's return to our agenda.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion?
Sure.
That we make move item eight be up to the, next on the agenda?
Oh, sure. Second that. Motion seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, you have in your possession ordinance 2000-
12 dash three.
Dash three.
Mm-hmm.
An ordinance approving the granting of utility easement on a portion of the city's property on South, to South Carolina Electric Gas. This involves, I'll make that as a motion and suspending of reading of the ordinance. Second. Motion seconded. What we have before us is three utility easements, if you will, for properties 5, 6, 8, 08, 01, 016, 017, and 120. I think we're all familiar with the purpose of this. This is to grant the easement so that the South Carolina Electric Gas can put the riser pole in place over here at 1301 to bring the additional circuit, after they brought the additional circuit line over under the marsh. So let me open it up for discussion, if there is any. Further discussion on this subject? None heard. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Go buy some cable or whatever you gotta do.
Go out and get us some cable.
No, just so, I'm not sure, in your new lofty position, what do you even know of? But we had an hour and a half of outage here.
Yeah.
You know, all right.
Yeah, there's got to be a house.
In the heat of the day, we had some very nervous folks, but-
Only electricity.
Only an hour, huh?
This house is very nervous of me.
Well, you got us back in service and very little disruption and nothing melted, best I know. So, thank you, crews, again, for coming through on the weekend for us.
Absolutely.
Thank you again. All right, now we'll move back to the regular scheduled program. Reports of standing committees. All right, I'll report on the Ways and Means Committee. We met on 5:45 on Tuesday, June 19th. We heard from our treasurer after 11 months into our fiscal year, which would indicate we're 92% of the way through the year. We are currently operating at, our budgets are currently at 83% level, which is obviously well ahead of our expectation, which is very good news. Property tax revenues continue to lag behind prior years, but we have received some additional funding, but we are still concerned Charleston County is having difficulty closing months out. They recently closed December, and I guess last week we received January's closing. So they're five, at least five months behind in closing their responsible months. And so we're still $360,000 short of our goal in receipt of property taxes. Still hopeful, we'll see what happens in the next few weeks. Cash in the bank is 28% of our general fund, which is very good for this time of year. Our tourism-related schedules, our municipal accommodations fee continues to crack on. We continue to run at 12% greater than the prior fiscal year. We received no funds from the state or Charleston passed through during the month, our hospitality tax. Again, we had a good month, and year-to-date, we're running at 10% over the prior year, fiscal year, and all our taxpayers are now current in those categories. Our beach restoration, we had our final applications from Bakers, et cetera, and that work is all done. I did inform the committee of my concern because OCRM issued a request, a request for funding, said they had a million dollars of funding available to improve access to the beaches, but specifically stated through legislation approved by the House and Senate that applications for beach renourishment funding are no longer eligible. And so the state has pulled back any beach renourishing funding throughout the state, not just here, not that we had any need at this point, but it's a very serious concern for those of us on the beach front that we're taking up with our legislators as we speak. And in particular, Folly Beach is in distress, and the federal government has told them to turn to the state, and the state is not turning, turn elsewhere. So they're herding puppies. Marina dredging- Marina dredging, and we've received all the invoices and we've basically closed out that schedule. Fifty-third to fifty-seventh Avenue is now going to be called Fifty-second Avenue to Forty-second Avenue, with our new drainage work and the surveying work continues to go on, and we're going to be modifying our reporting there. I did have the opportunity to report that Moody's improved, upgraded our bond rating from AA two to a AA one. I again would like to thank the administrator and all the members of staff and everybody involved in helping keeping our finances in order, and Moody's has recognized that and properly upgraded our bond conditions. We also received, we lobbied county council, the administrator and I went over there. It was a grueling process. Maybe not. So anyhow, we lobbied and received, they honored our request for forty-six thousand dollars to offset the cost of additional beach service officers for an FY thirteen, so that's good news. It'll help our funding for beach personnel, and we did, I indicated before, OCRM had a request if we wanted to improve beach access, well, we did submit an application to work with our beach walkovers and see if they can't help us fund part of that that we have in our sights. So with that, I'd like to move on to the fact that we also approved a word of a contract to Motorola for maintenance of two dispatch consoles for telecommunications center in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. This was budgeted as part of the annual maintenance program and is under a state contract, so I'd like to make that as a motion here. Second. Motion seconded. Any discussion on the console maintenance? None heard. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, none opposed, so. We adjourned shortly at six fourteen. It was a record meeting. Out in half an hour, and that's the Ways and Means report. Any questions? No questions, moving on. Public Safety, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety Committee met Tuesday, June twelfth. We, under old business, we discussed the update on the wayfinding signs. We had a couple of folks from Stan Tech at our meeting, and they actually rode with some of our officers on Memorial Day to get an idea as to what the island and parking situation looked like in a busy holiday, and they've been gathering information. They incorporated that into a site analysis, and they've done some of the base mapping. We are hoping they'll be presenting some designs to us at our next month's meeting. We continued the discussion, beach access, parking, and Councilmember Bur were reiterated that her position, our position, is that we want to protect the neighborhoods. Additional patrols will begin in July with the beginning of the new budget year, thanks in part to the good work of the mayor and city administrator in getting some funding for that. It was also mentioned that some of the no parking signs from here to the corner have disappeared. I'm sure our folks are on the lookout for them. We had an update on the speed study slash enforcement on Hartnett Boulevard between Twenty-Ninth and Thirtieth Avenue. Over a three-week period, our officers spent some time monitoring it, and one officer issued a warning for a quick takeoff from a stop position. Due to the shortness of the road, it's very hard, difficult to keep someone speeding, but the officers are continuing to patrol that area. We had, under new business, we had a citizen's request for parallel parking on one of the avenues, Eighth Avenue, in fact. The chief pointed out that it'd be very hard for his officers to single out one street that we have enforcement, and any action like that would require SCDOT approval. But we're also thinking this may be something that when we're thinking of the overall parking situation we have in the island, one of the other things we may want to consider. We discussed the youth volleyball and the other tournament at the Windjammer, which we acted on earlier, and we also discussed the Motorola contracts, which we've also just approved. Highlights of the departmental reports, the fire department, Chief Graham reported the department reported to ninety-one incidents in the month of May, forty-one of which were EMS calls, I'm sorry, and forty-one EMS calls. The new fire inspector performed thirteen inspections where he found eleven violations, which is for fifteen inspections. That's pretty darn good. Police Department, Chief Buchanan, reported that because of Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Memorial Day, traffic counts were higher than previous years. I'm sure if you traveled down Palm Boulevard, you noted that. I also think that in part that was due to the situation on Folly Beach where they don't have a county park readily available, well, it's not available. Dispatches responded to five thousand one hundred and sixty-five calls with four thousand one hundred and eighty-nine calls for the police department. During the month of May, one hundred and eighty-nine, I'm sorry, one hundred and sixty-seven reports were written, twenty-four arrests were made, with eight being for traffic offenses. There were thirty-five noise complaints received and two citations were written. We also discussed the disaster expo that was going to be taking place, which was also Mary reported on. I think, Linda, you probably wanted to mention something about the mobile data terminals.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make a comment. You all know that you have approved in the budget year that we're currently in, and also some in next year's budget, funding for the mobile data terminals. These are the terminals that will become very key as we transition, no pun intended there, as we transition into the consolidated dispatch. Just last, end of last week, I received the agreement from the county related to those mobile data terminals, because this is all part of the system, and the funding was approved in the appropriate budget years for our part of the devices. Recall, we participated in a grant which considerably lowered our upfront cost for these mobile data terminals. When I received the agreement, and we had been trying to get this information for a while and had not been able to get it, and I recall, too, that when both chiefs, you know, talked in terms of the mobile data terminals, they indicated that there would be some ongoing maintenance of the licensing associated with those in future years. And so now that I have this agreement before me, you know, ready to be executed from Charleston County, they do have figures in here for future years licensing maintenance. And I just did not feel comfortable signing this without at least mentioning these numbers to you. They will be subject to future councils, but, you know, once we make this purchase and are part of the system, then it's going to be something that this body, you know, and future bodies will be living with. And they give us numbers that are worst-case scenarios. Worst-case scenarios for FY fifteen, police and fire both would be almost ten thousand dollars. It's nine thousand six twenty-six, six twenty-nine roughly. And best case that they're seeing right now, that cost low, that cost reduces to about seventy-five hundred dollars. The ongoing licensing maintenance expense and how it is allocated out is determined by the number of users on the system. So as people come on to the consolidated dispatch, other local governments come on to it, and more of these mobile data terminals come online, then that cost is shared throughout the grouping. So that's the reason for the two figures. Right now, given, you know, who's in it, in 2015, we will be looking at an ongoing maintenance expense of almost ten thousand dollars for police and fire, and this is licensing maintenance associated with the software that's on them, and that's our shared portion of that. Again, I just felt like we've always said there would be that component of it, but we did not have the numbers for you, and we are talking about future budgets, but I'm being asked to sign the agreement now, so. And the other thing that the agreement says is that we will only use the mobile data terminals that are being, that where we're participating in the grant, they will always only be used for the purpose consistent with the terms of the grant, which basically are the public safety purpose for the.
What else would we use them for?
Right. I know, but they're asking us to assure them, and I'm sure that's because this is federal money and, you know, they're trying to show that they're passing the requirements on. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. It's not necessary for council to take an action at this time, but for my own comfort level in executing this agreement, I wanted to make sure that you all knew that we would have that future expense in future budgets.
Okay.
Thank you. Our next meeting will be Thursday, July twelfth, in the conference room, and I would like to mention that Chief Graham has stated in the meeting that the new evacuation maps, as well as the new flood maps, would be available at the disaster expo, so I am thinking that those will be on the tables upstairs, if not now, very soon. So if you need one, stop by and pick one up upstairs. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Plus, are there any questions?
Any questions for Public Safety?
Thank you very much.
Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Works Committee met on Thursday, June fourteenth. I was out of town, so Vice Chair Loftus took over in my absence. But on departmental reports, Director Pitts reported that for the month of May, focused on some beach sweeps, with a total of five of them. Hazardous material day that we had down at the city parking lots, he had additional guys working that time, so we had some extra overtime, as well as the Memorial Day weekend had, ran some extra overtime on some of his labor to avoid getting behind with collections from the following week. He also used some of the remaining mobile, mobi mats that we have at the beach access paths and used to replace some of the remaining ones at Forty-second Avenue path because it was in such poor condition. He also mentioned that we're going to have a little bit higher vehicle maintenance in June due to some repair work on a caterpillar, but the department will still end well under budget in that line item. Garbage collection was up in May, debris was consistent. We had some discussion about the single stream. It's great to see all those bins out there now, and one of the biggest questions is, when do I get, well, when does the rest of the island get theirs?
Quit bragging.
So, but, and that was basically the gist of the meeting. The next meeting is scheduled for two months, August seventh, at 5:00 P.M.
Okay.
Thanks for sharing that.
I do have a request for Public Works. I was with Mike Satelli, former mayor, yesterday, and he was going to come and make a request, and I said, well, I'll carry it for you to Public Works. His request is, can we modify our ordinances such that the blue recycled containers fit into our existing ordinance structure, requiring people to pull them back at the right time?
I don't think.
My point to him was, I'd give it to Public Works, and they'll make it through a couple of cycles to see how it's working. I mean, we've finally had them on the island, two weeks now, so.
I don't think that's going to be a hard fix.
So he's made the request, and I told him I'd pass it off to Public Works, and so now you've got it, so.
We'll put it on the agenda.
I feel good. Okay, there was, any questions for Public Works? Any more comments? No meeting from the Rec Committee, Personnel Committee had no meeting, but they do have sweepstake winners.
Sweepstakes winners are Recreation Christina Wilson, Police Department Craig Thompson, Public Works Joseph Ancrum, and the Fire Department Dana Burnett.
Okay, very good, thank you. Real Property had no meeting, and while the agenda says you have minutes from the Planning Commission, those have not been made available yet, and when they are available, we'll be putting in a box or electronically distributed, and you can make the request, and we'll go from there. So dispatch to item eight, up to item nine on your parade introduction of resolution. I'll ask the city administrator to walk us through the first one here.
Yes, the first one is the resolution required by being in compliance with GASP fifty-four. You'll recall, we did this for the very first time last year. It is required before we close out the books for this year, which is close now, just a matter of days, to do this similarly again, however, naming the, the numbers do change a little bit year over year. So that's the reason that we're doing this.
Okay, so we're not going to read it.
Okay.
Everybody's read it, you can see the details in there. We're dealing with the general fund disaster recovery, and we're dealing with the capital projects funds and recreation, Paul Field renovation, and declaring those funds, what's the term? I'm trying to remember the term.
Commitment.
Commitment, yes. So, I have a motion to approve the resolution. Motion seconded. Any discussion?
I assume this is on the website? Will it be on the website?
This resolution, we can certainly put it on the website.
Why not?
If anybody wants to see what it is.
All right.
Yeah.
Chair, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Second resolution. Do you want to read it?
Well, I'll be happy to read it. This is the resolution that we do every year to re-adopt our safety policy. It is a good practice for the policy setting body to make a statement relative to safety in the workplace, and as you know, our safety practices, when we do well, then we get discounts on our insurance and, you know, try to keep accidents down. That's why we have safety sweepstakes. You're not eligible to participate in the safety sweepstakes unless you have been accident-free. Resolution, whereas the City of Allepamps realizes that it has a responsibility to provide a safe work environment for its employees and that it each pursues the highest standards in his or her assigned activities, all municipal employees must recognize that the well-being of the persons involved in the protection of our physical resources are as important as the activity and work being performed. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Allepamps as follows. The city has established a safety and loss control program, which is monitored on a continuous basis. At the first segment of the city's program, a safety coordinator was appointed and assigned the responsibility of organizing the overall safety and loss control efforts. A safety committee was created to establish a loss control program, review losses, loss trends, make recommendations for prevention, and assign other safety responsibilities as needed. This committee is guided by the safety coordinator and its members include each department head or designee. Each department head will be responsible for the safety and health of the employees in their department, as well as the required maintenance of facilities and equipment in their area of responsibility. Each employee will be responsible for their own personal safety and for the safe completion of assigned tasks. The city requires its employees to respond to all planned safety efforts and to perform their assigned jobs in the safest manner possible. City of Allepamps is committed to doing all in its power to make its safety and loss control program a success and expects all employees to assist in this effort by contributing expertise and by following all established rules and procedures passed and approved by the City Council for the City of Allepamps, South Carolina, on the twenty-sixth day of June 2012. Richard F. Crinon.
Okay, motion to approve resolution?
So moved.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? None heard. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Stay safe.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I have one item. I failed to report in the PUG Safety Committee minutes. We approved the request for the annual Fourth of July golf cart parade. That's parade that starts now in Charleston, New York, about eleven o'clock on Fourth of July, of course. It's been going on, I don't know how many years it's been going on, but ever since I can remember, they've been doing that.
And it keeps throwing.
And it keeps throwing.
Last year, there were, I want to say, a hundred and twenty electric and other vehicles in the parade.
Right, so, just wanted you to know that's going to happen.
And didn't, I'm sorry, did you say this? And did, I'm sorry, did you say this year, did you say the theme for this year, or did I miss it?
I did not say this.
The theme for this year, in case you're interested in entering, is hats.
Is what?
Hats.
Hats.
And if you want to get an idea of what this parade is like, there, the photos from last year's parade, and I believe even the previous one, are on the city's website.
Okay. Any other miscellaneous business?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I just got one, one question. Is there any update about the meeting you had with Stantec on Thursday?
Um, the meeting went very well. Uh, we had a good group because we also had SCDOT represented in the room, um, and, and so we had an initial meeting with them, and then a meeting that followed up that also involved DOT. They are working, um, they showed, showed us some, um, designs, we made some comments on it, we made some comments about things that we felt, um, as though council would, would like to see. This was a very preliminary meeting, um, and, and discussed those things. We discussed some of the times that they had been out here to see the nature of the problem, and they had, um, talked about, a little bit about what they saw as potential corrections to, to help with that. We're expecting, as a result of that meeting, and some modifications to what they presented to us, for them to be coming forward with some actual visuals for committees and council to look at, and a plan for signage. And I will, I will just say, you know that when we entered into the wayfinding sign contract, you know, one of the things that we talked about was that this may be a step, there may be more steps, you know, they're, they're not, uh, Stantec is not being blind to the fact that it is, that this is just wayfinding that they've been assigned, but they know that the city is dealing with a much larger issue related to parking overall. So, you know, they see this as potentially becoming a bigger effort later, and so they're looking at this as one component of a much bigger picture.
Okay. Very good. Very good. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, one of the things that, I guess, has kind of slipped through our ordinances, and it's just something that has happened with the growth of businesses, is that our, the golf cart rental we have over on the other corner, across the street, um, now is selling billboards or advertising on the golf carts, which kind of goes against our, um, our credence of trying to keep the island clean and, and, you know, and, and watch signage and not have vehicles being used as, as billboards. Uh, and I, in pre, in the judgment of previous city councils, and I have no idea how long this has been in effect, but, uh, I think the wisdom of city council in the past, uh, previous generations has, you know, really protected the island as far as having excessive signage and advertising or whatever, and now, you know, we, the city granted a license, business license, to the golf cart rental, where no one knew that they would take that license in addition to renting the cart, rent billboards or advertising on the golf cart. So I think it'd be appropriate to stay consistent with the city's beautification plan and not have excessive signage and advertising, to amend our ordinances to include, uh, to prohibit the golf cart rentals having advertising on it.
Can I ask a question?
Okay.
Isn't it part of our ordinance now that, like, if, uh, I had a painting company, that I can't park my truck with advertising, like, on a street corner for the weekend or something? Isn't there something?
Mr. Mayor.
You can't be parked for, um, the purpose of advertising. So you can park it for your own personal use, but if it's parked in a certain situation to get passerby to see it for the purpose of advertising, then it would be a violation of ordinance.
Right, and that's what we enforce.
It doesn't, the ordinances do not apply to parking for your own personal needs or to, um...
Visit job sites.
Or to moving vehicles.
Right.
So it doesn't apply to moving vehicles, or...
Right.
I mean, I, I quickly fall to the fact that CARDA has advertising on the buses.
You get into a lot of, um, commercial speech and First Amendment, um, types of cases when, when you get into regulating that type of thing, which is very tough to do.
People with magnets on their cars.
Okay. Um, so what's your consideration, if you would like this?
Well, I'd like to change the ordinances to include this to be prohibited, where we shouldn't have golf carts, which we have under our license to rent on the Ala Poms, have commercial advertising on it. That's again, that defeats the whole purpose of our billboard, uh, you know, control and and the effort to keep beauty, continue to keep the city beautiful. We don't need excess, we don't need that.
Douglas actually asked me to take a look at it, and I haven't completed my research on it yet. I, I think it's going to be pretty difficult to do, um, but I'll, I'll do the legal work before we get involved in drafting an ordinance or anything like that, just to make sure that, that it is possible. Right now, what my research is finding is that, um, you know, it's going to be really tough to try to regulate a moving vehicle without inviting some type of constitutional litigation on that, um, just because you are dealing with commercial speech and, and First Amendment rights. Um, but, uh, you know, I have not completed my research, and unless I do, you know, I'll, I'll let you know whether I...
Okay, get back with Douglas and Linda, and, you know, we'll bring it up again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Linda, is there anything?
No, sir.
Good. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Get out of here. Not quite a record, but, still good. Sun's still up.